Okay, we are going to call to order the meeting of the Independent School District number 283 on this evening, Monday, February 24th, a couple minutes after 7:00 PM. First, we have the approval of the agenda. So first up, we will have open forum, and we do have a few people who it looks like they would like to speak to us tonight. After that, superintendent's report. Our discussion items this evening will be student research project reports, financial advisory committee recommendations, policy development, first reading of policy 404, employment background check, policy development, second reading of policy 519, interviews with students by outside agencies. And then we will have our consent agenda. On our action agenda this evening, we have the approval of the second reading of policy 519, the employment agreement of our new children first executive director, and communications and transmittals. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Heather. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six zero this evening. Okay. First, we have open forum. I just want to welcome everybody here and say thank you very much for everybody who is in attendance. For those of you who are here for open forum, which we hold the second meeting of the month, anyone indicating a desire to speak during open forum will be acknowledged by the board chair. That's me. When called upon to speak, please state your name, address, and briefly the topic that you are going to present on. All marks should be addressed to the board as a whole, please, and not to any specific member or person who is not a member of the board. If there are a number of you who are here to present on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson to summarize the issues. Please limit your comment to three minutes. Longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. That's me. If you have any written comments, the board would like to have a copy, which can help us better understand what you're presenting on. We will listen to comments. Hey, Ken. We will listen to comments, but please know that this is not the time for us to be able to respond to those comments or engage in a conversation. We have a listening session coming up on February 29th. If you would like to have more of a discussion or conversation about your topic at that time, that's at 10:00 AM on Saturday, the 29th. But please know that your comments are important to us, and we will follow up after the meeting as appropriate. And then finally, please be aware that disrespectful comments or any comments of a personal nature directed at an individual, either by name or inference, whether staff member, student, or anyone else, will not be allowed. So, yes.
Students are not required to give their address on camera.
Right. Thanks, Karen. Okay. First up, we have Linda Enright. Yes, up to the podium, please. I think the mic should be working.
Hello.
Okay. And again, just name, address, and what you're going to talk to us about, and then.
Hi, my name is Linda Enright. My address is 3824 Alabama Avenue in St. Louis Park, and I'd like to talk about nutrition and wellness in our schools. I've lived in St. Louis Park for over 20 years. I've had three kids going through the St. Louis Park schools. My education and career is in nutrition. I am also a member of the district's Wellness Committee and have been a champion for health of the park for the city as well. Access to good nutrition improves students' cognition, their concentration, and their energy levels. It enhances a student's psychosocial well-being. It reduces aggression and decreases discipline problems. I don't think we're doing enough to support good nutrition in our schools. Because of the approved referendum, the construction of new kitchens, and the creation of District Wellness Committee, I believe that we're at a turning point in our district with the opportunity to improve the health and wellness of both our students and our staff. But we need to make nourishing our students a high priority. I'm asking for your support of four items today. First, the creation of a city and district-wide food action plan. Second, to support the work of the Wellness Committee and implementation of our wellness policy. Third, the creation of opportunities for culinary classrooms at each of our schools. And fourth, to support career pathways in food and health education. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Enright, as I say, into the microphone. Next up, we have Ariel And I should have also noticed that our wonderfully helpful flower, Kritina, is keeping track of the time over there, if you wanted to take a look as necessary.
Hi, my name is Ariel Steinman. My address is 3325 Dakota Avenue, South. I work in St. Louis Park with SLP Seeds, which is a nonprofit that works for food security here. And, sorry, I wanted to talk about the culinary classroom here in the high school. And I know somebody else is going to talk more about its updating, but we are requesting use of this for a Green Corps member. As somebody who was in the Peace Corps, it really changed my life and really helped me grow a lot as a person. And we have the opportunity to get a Green Corps member to come and work with the school district to help use food waste in redistributing it to the community and to people in need. We've talked to the people who run bird feeder, as well as DECA, and a few other people within the school. And we'd like your support to use that as an office. We've been denied for a Green Corps member in the past due to not having an office space for them. So that room is not being used currently, and we'd love to use it for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Steinman. Next, we have Sharon Lerman? Lerman?
Lerman.
Lerman.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So, my name is Sharon Lerman. I live at 2610 Vernon Avenue, South, in the Birchwood neighborhood. I am a registered dietitian, nutritionist. I'm also a better eating champion for health in the park and a board member of SLP Seeds. I actually grew up in St. Louis Park and graduated from this very high school, but I still get lost when I have to find things in the circle. I am here to make a case for revisioning of the high school culinary classroom, the one in which I myself actually took home ec over 40 years ago, and a space that is essentially going unused through June of 2021. In the past two years, Seeds has been given access to conduct Cooking Matters classes for middle school and high schoolers in the culinary classroom, and that was wonderful, as well as challenging, since we were sharing the space with other teachers' needs unrelated to cooking. Seeds would love to see that space transformed to a true teaching kitchen for our students, as well as a place to grow fresh foods like microgreens, sprouts, and mushrooms. This would allow us to provide fresh produce for our bird feeder students besides the shelf-stable foods they get now. School gardens and food-based programs can help surmount some of the systemic barriers to eating healthy. A 2015 U.S. Department of Agriculture census of about 18,000 public, private, and charter school districts found 7,101 traditional and hydroponic gardens based in schools. Tom Bravo is working on ways to help us create more gardens, but until that time, dedicating the culinary classroom for full-time use to Seeds and for the Green Corps office would help cultivate food justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who did not get a chance to complete a yellow form? Going once, going twice? All right. Well, I just want to thank the three of you women who spoke tonight very much for your advocacy and for taking the time to come out tonight and talk to us about something that certainly impacts all of our students and our community as well. So, thank you all very much, and we will not be offended if you want to leave right now and stay. Okay, next up, we have our superintendent's report by Superintendent Osai.
Good evening, Chair Tombak, members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight a couple of items connected to our strategic direction. The first item that I would like to highlight is the work that we've been conducting related to out-of-school time for middle school students and families. With the change in start time for the 2020-2021 school year, we've been working over the past several months to come up with options for students after school that would meet their academic, social, emotional needs. As a part of this work, we've also been looking at ways to create a schedule that would allow for our teachers to continue to collaborate during the school day. We are currently in the process of seeking feedback from stakeholders regarding the ideas that the task force has generated, and will be seeking feedback for the remainder of the month of February into the beginning of the month of March, and making some final recommendations at that time regarding potential out-of-school time opportunities for middle school students starting in the 2020-2021 school year. The next item that I would like to share connected to our strategic direction is the work of our high school schedule task force. Similar to the middle school out-of-school time task force, the high school schedule task force has been meeting for several months, and we are at the point in the process in which we've developed a couple of options that we are getting feedback from with staff. And starting today, we were starting to get feedback and input from students. There are two options that we'll be looking at getting feedback from. One is a block schedule option, which on one day a week, students would have eight periods. And then for the remainder of the week, Tuesday through Friday, they would have alternating classes every other day, but they would have four classes a day. This would be 80-minute class periods with rotating clubs and student help and collaboration time built into the day. The other option that we're in the process of getting feedback on is a seven-period model. And this model is very similar to the current model that we have, except for this model no longer has the late starts on Tuesday and Thursday, and has the intervention collaboration time built into the school day. So, school would start at the same time for students every day, and they would be able to get support from teachers during the middle of the school day. So, we will be continuing to get feedback from students, staff, and parents over the next couple of weeks, and coming back together as a task force in early March to make a final recommendation regarding schedules for the 2021-22 school year. So, if there is a decision to change the high school schedule that would not go in effect until the 2021-22 school year, and it was actually quite amusing today as I was in the cafeteria talking to some of our current 11th graders, because as I mentioned it to them, when I told them when it would start, they told me that they're not interested in having a discussion. So, I guess they knew that they wouldn't be here, and I don't blame them for that. The last thing I would like to do is just take a moment to acknowledge our school board members. As I've mentioned before, school board members here in St. Louis Park and all across the state and country work extremely hard to meet the needs of students and families, and I would suggest that the school board members sitting in front of you are no different. You know, countless other different task force and groups that you all sit on, and you do it all to help us move our mission forward, and for that, we're extremely grateful. I would also like to just, members who have MSBA training, and in their professional life and personal life. Currently, Ann Casey, Mary Tombak, and Karen Waters went through every single MSBA school board training, and I appreciate, you know, your diligence and commitment to furthering your expertise as a school board member. I also want to take this moment in the audience today as we're acknowledging school board members. One of my former school board members from the Osieria School District Board Chair Dean Hinky is here. Just wanted to say hi, right? So, but it just speaks to the dedication and commitment that school board members make to the staff and students and families that they serve. So, thank you all for your leadership, and I'm honored to work for you. And that concludes my report.
And thanks for the plants. That's very nice. That's why we have greenery and decor on our dais this afternoon, or this evening. Okay, our first discussion item for the evening is student research project reports. I know we're all excited to hear this. We always like to be able to hear from students. So, Dr. Duffy, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Jill Merkel, Callie Hefted, our high school teachers, and some students will present to us. Okay.
Good evening, Chair Tombak, members of the board, Superintendent Osai. I am excited tonight to have a large group of presenters that are going to share their projects. As you know, we've been doing a lot of work around culturally relevant pedagogy in our schools and have been using the framework of Gloria Ladsen Billings to really frame everything we do in our classrooms under the work of academic success, cultural competence, and critical socio-political consciousness as well. And I think the projects that you're going to hear about tonight really fit into this, as well as anything that I've seen. Whether it's been in the 11th grade language arts classes where they've been looking through critical literacy and understanding how power and oppression play out, or whether it's been through civic engagement in 9th grade social studies classes, these students have taken their projects and put them into a way in which they can try to figure out how they can change the educational system in which we all operate. And they have taken that research and want to share it with you all to look particularly at what role you might play in helping them make their projects a reality. So, they have brought many of these projects to us, whether it's been members of the cabinet, to their principals, to Superintendent Osai already. They've shared it with their teachers, and tonight they want to share it with you and all of the viewing public at home to see how they can move forward and make sure that what their dreams are might become a reality. I want to say, when we talk about cultural competence and critical consciousness, these terms can sometimes be something that are sort of abstract. But if you look at them together, there's a piece that we talked about right before the students came in today that sort of illustrates what we mean. A lot of times, cultural competence, when we hear it or we talk about it, and we talk about diversity, we have a very limited and discreet view of that as just of what we see. And although we need to understand the intersection of race and culture when we have these conversations, we had a conversation today about the notion that, what we noticed, that almost all of the, well, all of the people that are presenting here tonight are women, other than me. Young women presenting and seeing themselves, and potentially that they saw themselves in the teachers that called upon them to be here tonight. And it made us wonder, at least made me wonder, with a diverse teaching staff, what would our presenters look like? And we talked about that noticing and whether or not we should bring it up here tonight, and what that would mean for critical consciousness, and what that would mean for our conversations about cultural competence. And I actually recalled a situation, and I appreciated the setting in Ms. Hefted's classroom, where I was in there speaking and waxing philosophical, if you believe it or not, about educational policies in her 11th grade English class. And a student stopped me and said, we were in circle, and he said, "What are you?" And I said, "Well, I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction." And he goes, "No, what are you?" And I said, "Do you mean, like, where are my ancestors from?" And he said, "Yeah." And I said, "Well, from the Middle East, from Lebanon." And he goes, "I knew it. I'm not the only one." And I said, "Ah." And it struck me that I had never really shared that part of myself openly with people, and that although when people see me on the outside, they might just see my whiteness, but they don't necessarily know what other parts of me are there until they get to know me. And it made me wonder what else we need to see about these presenters tonight and what they're going to share with us about their research and how that will tell us more about who they are as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to these young presenters now.
Hello, and good afternoon, school board members. I am Anna McCallan, and...
I'm Cameron Holly. We're both in 9th grade.
We presented, or we did our project about school stressors and mental health and how they affect students' lives. I have personal experience with this. I had open-heart surgery when I was 12 years old, so two years ago, and from that, I have post-traumatic stress disorder, and I've always had very severe anxiety, and school has played a big part in that. And it has not always been easy in school with all the homework and projects. It sometimes, well, a lot of times, gets very overwhelming, and it seems like it's very hard to get things done, and that school is just a very kind of like, hard thing to get through, especially high school with excessive homework and projects.
So, according to our research, 83% of students across the country are significantly affected by school stress. And when we talked to our classmates, they definitely said it played a big role in their lives with all the projects, homeworks, and just a big workload. And we also were researching about organizations or laws that help students with this, but there really was nothing we could find. And we think a really big problem is, like, school stress is looked at as something that is just normal, and then you have to deal with, and it's not really looked at as like a problem that can be fixed. So, we think this is definitely something that should be looked at and worked on.
We were just, what I have personally learned from doing this project is that I am not alone in school stress, is that a lot of people around the country, and it's very common to have actually more-than-normal stress about school and anxiety, and worrying about your GPAs and ACT scores. And it's very overwhelming for kids, and it's very just interesting to see that I am not alone, and everybody is not alone in school stress and how much, and their mental health. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Hello, good evening. I'm Molly Horstman Olsen. I'm a 9th grader here at the high school, and our project was excessive homework and the stress that it causes to high school students in particular, but all students. And, yeah.
I'm Ruby Levon, and part of the reason why I specifically wanted to research this topic was that not only, like, when we were researching this, that it was such, like, at that time for finals, it was a lot, but also when, like, thinking about what classes I'm going to take, the anticipated homework stress of knowing that the honors classes and the AP classes are more, and the IB classes, that it actually kept me from going as far as I could when it came to taking the AP Environmental Science course this year in 9th grade. I actually chose to not take that course, not because I wouldn't be able to be in the class and learn, but because of all the homework on top of all my other classes, then I knew that that would be too much for me.
And as a student who did choose to take the AP Environmental Science, it is a lot of homework. We took a survey with the classes, and we found that most students have two to three hours of homework a night, which might not really seem like a lot, like it kind of seems normal, but if you add in, so you have your hours at school, right, and you get home, and you have two to three hours of homework, plus that, you have dinner, you have extracurricular activities, you have family time, you have literally anything else you would be doing at that time, including, like, just relaxing time. And students, high school students, need nine and a quarter hours of sleep every night, and I know for a fact that most of the people I know do not get that at all, any night, ever. And we just think that it is a very big problem. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, I'm Hope Kejanya. I'm an 11th grader, and my topic primarily focused on mental health and its effects on graduation rates and students in general. I was shocked to find out that 40% of kids who don't graduate suffer from mental health issues, and I thought this topic was really important because although mental health is being less and less stigmatized, that kids are still struggling to, like, be able to be honest and tell their teachers what they're going through. And I feel like if teachers were maybe taught, like, more about the signs of, like, to see whether or not a kid is actually going through something, that that would help the kid feel more open about telling their teacher. I personally suffer from mental health issues. I have anxiety and depression, and I've seen myself several times not being able to tell my teacher, being too scared or too shy. But when I have teachers that actually know, like, what it's like, or at least have a deeper understanding of it, I feel a lot more comfortable. And I want that for all students that go to St. Louis Park, to be able to feel comfortable telling their teachers what's going on, and for those teachers to acknowledge that and accommodate for that. What I took away from this project was that a lot of kids like me are going through a lot, and school can be very difficult for them, and that they just want to feel more comfortable in their classroom setting. Thank you for...
Hi, my name is Sophie Yakes. I'm a junior here, and I also picked the topic of mental health. I am personally affected by it, so that's why I chose it, and because I think that it's not talked about, and it's still, while it's becoming less and less stigmatized, it still needs, it still deserves to be talked about, and still deserves to be looked into, because if you look around, there are a lot of kids that are doing really well in high school, but there are also a lot of kids who are really struggling a lot of days, and that's not fair, because that really affects their focus in class, out of class. And a lot of kids turn to other things to try to help, which in turn usually don't help. I researched this topic by, in my English class, we did infographics, so I researched a couple of different things that classes or schools do to try to help. So, music programs. I play in the orchestra, I play violin, and I know that it's one of the best parts of my day, is being able to just kind of relax and have the music help me and just kind of move me. So, I really would highly suggest, you know, supporting the orchestra and supporting our performing arts programs, and also just because a lot of kids deal with it. I know I'm not the only one. It can be really, really difficult to get out of bed, and much less get on the bus or get in the car to go to school all out of days. And I learned that through my infographic and through my letter that I actually wrote to Ms. Bussie, that people listen, and if you want them to listen, they will, they're here for you. And I was originally going to write my letter. I was like, "Oh, I'll just write it to, like, Michelle Obama or something, because then I won't have to deal with it again." But I'm glad that I wrote it to Ms. Bussie, because I got a pass one day, and I was like, "Oh, I hope I'm not in trouble." But it was actually for a meeting with her about, and with a couple of other students who had the same topic as I, and we got to talk about it and say, "What can we do about it?" And my suggestion is to enforce it more in the curriculum, because a lot of people are uneducated about it, students and teachers, and I think it would just be an amazing experience for a lot of people to be able to learn more about it and be more aware about it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fiona Shock. This is Fiona Long, and this is Katie Crocker, and we are in 9th grade. The topic we chose was try to get feminine hygiene product dispensers with free products in SLP High School bathrooms. We chose this topic because we believe that having these products is a necessity and not a luxury. We've all had experience where we did not have access to these products. We also know that other people, a lot of people in the school also face not having access to these products. We know that sometimes there can be a lot of negative stigma around talking about periods and menstruation, but we really believe that this is a problem that needs to be addressed.
So, we polled students, and 70% of girls that we polled said that they've been in a situation where they needed a pad or tampon and didn't have access to one, and 97% of students said that they believe that this would be of value and would help students here at SLP. Also, as you probably know, 32.2, I think, percent of students here get free or reduced lunch. So, that really shows a need for these products that are really necessities to helping these girls thrive in their education. We believe that, so, these products are available at the nurse's office, but that process can be actually really embarrassing for many girls, and a lot of people don't even know where the nurse's office, which is a problem in itself. And so, we believe that having these in the bathroom would be great. No girl should have to go through the day without a pad or tampon when she needs it, because that can be uncomfortable, stressful, and can obviously be a detriment to her education. So, yeah, that's what we want to do.
Thank you.
I think now would just be a good time just to interject quickly.
I think now would just be a good time, just to interject quickly, that we're going to.
Hello, my name is, um, hello, my name is Rosalina Sanchez. I'm a junior here. My project is on discrimination. Discrimination in our school hallways is a problem, and I'm not so sure our classrooms are even safe anymore. Last week on Wednesday during fourth period in my pottery class, a boy made a rude remark. It started out with him sounding frustrated, like someone had offended him. As I listened closer, he started going on about how people are weird nowadays. He spoke about a non-binary peer. He told us about his conversation with that peer. At first, he called them a she. That peer corrected him by saying they aren't a she. He then called them a he. They corrected him once more by telling him what pronouns they preferred. They, them, there. He doesn't finish his story about the rest of the conversation. But he did say people are weird and need to make up their minds, and I quote, "People need to stop being so sensitive," end quote. I understand he may have a different background. His family may not be tolerant of LGBTQ, but they should at least educate him on how to mind his own business. I've seen fat shaming. I've seen girls calling one another sluts. I've seen kids picked on just because of the clothes they were wearing. I've seen kids looked down upon just because of their race. Things gotta change. A solution, in my opinion, is an educated video, or perhaps an educated paper, one that you send home with the child, the child. And not only do they have to work on it, but their parents too. That's where the problem stems. Kids don't, kids don't develop bad thoughts or... Kids don't make up their minds on their own. Kids are born pure, but once tainted, I guess you could say, their minds can be made up. We need to prevent discrimination in a way so we could prevent depression, stress, suicide, et cetera. What I took away from this is discrimination isn't dead. Discrimination isn't just on race. It's well around and nobody seems to care. Thank you.
I wish that one were easier, as easy to solve.
We're gonna open it now for questions and comments.
Do you have any questions?
All, we all, I need a moment, just a second.
First of all, thank you, everybody. You were um doing exactly what we would like IB critical thinkers to do. You took risk in an appropriate way. You're very respectful. You're giving us a lot to think about. Um, it'd be helpful to see uh more of the actual research citations to help with the evidence gathering that we need as we take a look at the different issues and then how we're gonna allocate resources toward each of these issues. So that'd be helpful to have that be provided. And thank you to the teachers for leading this effort with our students.
I don't have a question, but um I just wanna say thank you and wow. The things that you are all looking at and talking about, I can't imagine myself as a ninth grader or an eleventh grader being as brave and wonderful as you all are. Um, you've, like Karen said, you've given us a lot to think about. Um, and these are very real issues. And bringing them to our attention is really important, and it's especially important to hear it from you, the students. So thank you. And, you know, good luck with your project.
I have lots of questions, but I think I'm gonna save some of them and maybe more individually and just say what I fear is that this is just the tip of the iceberg. We're just hearing from a small section of students and how many, th- this is, you know, we have four hundred kids in each grade and the individual things that they're feeling and, and all of these things and other things. And so it's really um powerful. It's always powerful for me to hear personal experiences and to hear from all these students who are taking a big risk, like we said. Um, they are speaking and speaking eloquently. Um, I, I'm a, you know, trained high school public speaking teacher, and I was proud of every single kid that got up there um to share, share their experiences because I know what it takes to put something like that together and then to be brave and come up here and speak in front of other people and share those things. So I think, um, like I said, so many questions stirring in my mind, but just wanted to say my appreciation for just sharing as much as everybody did today. Thank you.
Um, if the last student that presented, what was your name again? Um, as many of you know, I'm a Park graduate, nineteen ninety-eight, so, yeah, go Orioles. Um, being local, immediate, and very personal, um, it saddens me to hear that that is still your experience here because um unfortunately mine was very similar to yours. I think that we, as a school district, we offer excellent educational opportunities for our students. But we still have a lot of work to do because if we even have one student that feels like that, then we are not doing our job. Um, I'd like to thank all of you for bringing your concerns to us. And it lets us know that, yes, while we are offering these spaces for you to form these ideas and these solutions, the fact that they exist and that we are not um as aware of them as we should be means that we have work, and I myself take that very seriously. Um, Rosa, I truly hope and I, I know that you will be stronger and you will survive. And then guess what? It does get better. It does. Um, thank you for sharing your story. I think that we need to hear that and know that that is the reality for some of our students.
Well, I'll just conclude by um thanking Dr. Duffy for making sure that we heard this presentation tonight. And thank you so much to the teachers. And I know many of you did write letters, um, send emails and to the people who answered them. Um, thank you for this work because you all are going to be the ones who are sitting at tables like this eventually. And so this advocacy is starting now, and it will serve everyone. And the whole, in St. Louis Park, in the state, in the country, better because you're starting so early. Um, and to follow up on what I said, uh Superintendent Osai told me that we will be having dispensers in the bathrooms. And um I think from a gender equity standpoint, they need to be free supplies in there for every reason that you mentioned. So I'm just, I can't make any decisions at this moment, but I'm saying I would like that to happen. I'm hoping everybody's listening to me. Um, and then to Ms. Sanchez, I also wanted to say the very last thing you said is that no one cares. And I completely understand that that is very much how it feels sometimes. Um, but I want you to know that there are many people that do care. And those of us who care and have power promise you that we will um continue to do what we can and to do better so that, um, as Laura said, you're, um, that is not the experience that students have at St. Louis Park schools. So thank you all very much, particularly those of you who spoke about mental health and stress. You just put yourselves through a lot to come stand in front of the school board on a Monday night. So um your courage and um bravery is obvious and a, again, a benefit to all of us. So thank you very much. All right, no offense to the Financial Advisory Committee, you guys have a really long uphill battle to captivate our attention in the same way.
I don't know that we'll get the same applause, but.
Well, it depends. Let's see what you've gotta tell us about the numbers.
Uh, hi, my name is David Larson, and this is Brian Kelly. Uh, and we are just a couple members of the Finance Advisory Committee. Um, I gotta figure out how to drive the, our agenda here. Um, so this is a, kinda the agenda that we ran through during the year. Uh, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit here about the members and our purpose, our twenty-twenty approach, uh, and some of our considerations. We'll walk through some of the revenue drivers to the budget and talk a little bit about the fund balance, the current economic considerations and how they may impact uh what we think are potentially future funding sources for the district and then our overall recommendations. Um, so here are the FAC members from this year. I would point out, there's only, under the community side, last year there was only four people with little stars by them. Uh, and there's a lot more this year. And uh, so last year we had just the four of us, Julia, Steve, myself, and Katie, who I think you've all met. Uh, and then typically we had one school board member, um, and then Brooks and Patricia and uh no students. And so one of the things that Patricia wanted to do was expand the number of folks that we had on the committee this year. Um, and, you know, in part to try and help expand on some of the transparency, which we'll touch on here in a minute, um, as well as just to get some additional feedback from people. Um, and, 'cause in this case, if we can get more, uh, more thoughts about what's going on and more ideas, that potentially that's a, that's a good thing. So there was an expansion of the FAC members for this year. Uh, our purpose is to advise the administration and the SLP School Board on economic and school finance issues and build community trust in district finances. And again, I think expansion of our uh Finance Advisory Committee was one of the, was one of the things we were looking at there, so.
Thanks, David. So the twenty-twenty approach, uh, we just touched on the expanded membership. And the one thing that stood out to me, being a brand-new member, is we had a, I believe we ended up with a community member from every building. So every elementary school, middle school, high school, uh, which is just great to hear different experiences and a few that have been through the district and a few that are, like me, still in elementary school with two kids. Um, basically focused on educating the committee. Uh, those of us that are new in particular, it's very interesting and enlightening just to hear how the different factors work, uh, what the different um drivers are of the revenue and expenses and those sorts of things and try to get a handle on how it all fits together. And then lastly, improve transparency. Uh, in particular, the meeting materials are all available on the district website. Uh, but the interesting thing, we did at the first meeting, we broke into small groups and had each group define trust. And there were four groups, and every group had transparency come out of their, uh, their, their group. So that was a big focus on how are we transparent. Uh, we had conversations around. Um, I, one that sticks out to me is there was some talk of a fund that was being funded one place, and we had money elsewhere, so we funded it here, and I was like, no, 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 keep it in one place. Like, if I'm a community member trying to read this stuff, keep the line item in the same place so we can find it and, and can track it if we wanna, if people wanna follow it closely. So a few things like that that came up that really were interesting and I think can help just drive transparency among the community.
All right. Um, so again, some of the primary factors that we discussed, the transparency of the district finance, finances. Uh, we talked about the state of Minnesota and its economic outlook. The, the, the per diems are incre, are set, the increases next year are already set. So we're trying to look out a little bit further to see what those might look like in the future as we're trying to figure out uh what type of revenue increases we'd see. Uh, we looked at the financial planning model and focused kind of on the enrollment side of it and the revenue drivers and the expense management piece of that. Uh, we talked quite a bit about uh budget variances and, and how we could uh track those and, and uh communicate those better. Um, the, uh, we started talking about the general unassigned fund balance policy um and, and other program metrics. Um, I will say, you know, there was, in terms of the expense management side, there wasn't a lot of discussion on that. About eighty-five percent, give or take, of the, of the dollars spent are on salaries and benefits. So there isn't a lot to, to push around or talk about there. The contract is settled, the, um, and so there wasn't a lot of discussion there. Uh, in terms of the budget variances, we did talk about the concept of trying to introduce, you know, a forecast versus budget, which will, uh, which we'll touch on later in part because as the budgets are developed, I think it's in June when the budget for the next year is, is set out. You don't know exactly how many teachers you got. You don't know exactly how many kids are gonna be in the seats and things like that. And uh, and so trying to basically take off and, and effectively reforecast those dollars so that people can see which way is it trending, is it trending higher or lower relative to what you kinda started the year with, was an important thing we wanted to, to introduce. Um, so the majority of the general fund is derived from basic revenue. So what basically happens is if you look at the number of children uh in K to five, and you take that number times one, and, or K to six, and take the number of kids in seven to twelve times one point two, you come up with an APU. Uh, and that is what is used by the legislature uh for funding purposes. So in our case, we've got about forty-six hundred students, give or take, every year, and it translates into roughly about five thousand or fifty-one hundred APUs. And that becomes the basis for the, for the funding from the state. Uh, and here was a breakdown, or is a breakdown, of the various uh number of, of, this is number of students in the seats uh right now and, and kinda where we see it trending, or where it has and, and where we're projecting it out over the next three years. Um, I'd point out a couple things here. You know, we've been running, it, it, we don't have a total at the top of these bars, but there were forty-five hundred and eighty-three students in twenty fifteen, forty-six oh seven in, in sixteen, forty-six oh six, forty-six twenty-four, forty-five seventy-seven. We're running around forty-six hundred students uh per year that are, that are coming through. And it equates to typically between five thousand fifty and five, and fifty-one hundred APUs. And, and so, um, what I kind of take as a, from this is, you know, first of all, the, the buildings are pretty full, so there isn't an ability to bring in much more right now. But that's what will, will happen in a couple of years as the, the new facilities come on, particularly at the middle school and finished up here so we can take on more students. Um, right now, we've got about fifteen percent of our kids are uh filling out seats from open enrollment, which is a great thing. Where I think we typically lose about five hundred and we're picking up about seven hundred. So that extra two hundred students means a lot. Um, through the various funding sources, there's probably about fifteen thousand dollars a kid that comes through. So if we, um, if there was no open enrollment, we'd be down about three million dollars in revenue right now. So open enrollment has not been a bad thing for St. Louis Park. And as these buildings come online and there's more seats available, that potentially is gonna become a big revenue source for us. Right now, we're kinda capped on that end. Uh, after looking at some of the numbers for the year, uh, the FAC is recommending that we use fifty-one hundred APUs for the year. Um, and, which is about fifty kids more than what it would be this year. Really based primarily on, we have a small twelfth-grade class and there's perceived to be a larger incoming class from the kindergarten side. So that's gonna make up most of the seats, you know, translated in APUs, it's gonna be about fifty-one hundred. So that's where we thought we would come in at. Brian, back to you.
One, one quick enrollment note. Uh, Patricia, I believe you developed this, but I was really impressed. There, the, her office has a model based on Berthton, Hennepin County, and formulas and capture rates. And it was like, you kinda don't know if it's gonna be right or not, but, but having, being exposed to it for the first time, it was like, okay, we have a formula to work from, and now we can start to figure out where we're going from there. So I was very impressed by that. Um, this is the formula allowance history, so the increase of uh funding from the legislature. Uh, we know right now it's set at two percent for these next two years. Obviously, there's a total unknown beyond that, but uh we're working off that two percent as a continued number as we go forward. And then, other revenue drivers. Again, very interesting learning as a new member. Special education is very variable, dependent on other districts in the state. And you actually don't know what it is until like six months after the year's over. Running a business myself, I was like, "How do you even do that? It seems crazy." But it appears that this year, we're gonna be a little ahead of last year, based on the estimates we have right now, and anticipating that. We're really not counting on it yet, but anticipating that, and then staying flat to that level going forward. And then, in this current school year, student fees were increased. We just got numbers last week that the revenues are about twenty thousand higher, and participation was the same. So that seems to have worked well to drive a little revenue and maintain participation in the activities. And so recommendation-wise, we would say, kind of maintain special education flat to what it will be at the end of this year, and then maintain the student fees flat as well after the increase last year.
Alright. Well, one thing I'd point out too, when we talk special ed revenues that are coming in, and again, we are looking backwards, we're getting some reimbursement in arrears for what we did last year and so on. To see an increase there isn't necessarily a good thing, because we get about sixty cents on the dollar for every dollar we spend. So if we're seeing increases in our reimbursement, it means there's incrementally more dollars that we have had to spend in order to support those programs. So it's a bit counterintuitive that, you know, if we had, if we spent less on that, we might actually have more for other programs. But, so. Alright. The, we talked about next, the fund balance. And as it says, the school board has talked about in the past an unreserved general fund balance. You know, we need it for cash flow reasons, you know, if there are legislative shortfalls or changes, tax abatements, other unanticipated needs. And we've talked about a target of six percent of the unreserved fund balances as being the target. I think one of the things that came out of our discussions was, let's change maybe our vernacular here a little bit and talk more about, is that, should that be more of a floor? And there's more of a target that we're kind of focused on where, as we're climbing above that, we think about, are there additional programs we can expand to use as we start to fall below that? That's, you know, so there's a gap between maybe what is our target and what is our minimum. And so the question would be, is this, you know, should six percent be considered a minimum instead of a target? But in any event, then here's how some of the unassigned fund balances have rolled throughout the year. The last column that you see there in the light shade, that is the concept of this forecast that we have introduced this year. And so back in June of 2019, there would have been a budget that called for a shortfall of about two and a half million dollars. But since then, there have been some known changes that have occurred. Over the, you know, some of the enrollments were a little bit higher, some of the expenses are coming in a little bit lower. There were some additional revenue sources that were found, for instance, the special education would be one. And so as you now kind of blend this forward, you look at it and say, okay, instead of going from a ten point six to an eight point six million dollar unassigned budget, it looks like we've found, you know, that the hole isn't gonna be quite as deep based on how we've been able to reforecast some of those things. And so in terms of trying to add some of the transparency into where we're at, if we know we've got changes, and probably some of the first things that Patricia's gonna know about is, okay, how is enrollment looking versus what we kind of thought it was at? Because you look at October 1st, and you know now the number of kids in the seats, and you got some idea of how much that's gonna be tricked over the year. What does that translate into APUs, and what does that do relative to the budget that we had set up? So we may find next year that, okay, we budgeted fifty-one hundred APUs, and it's coming in more like fifty-eight, right? Well, take those twenty kids, and what does that do to our funding? And so rather than just having twice a year that you're talking about budget, and then a revised budget, to have some idea of how this is reforecasting through. And so that's what the attempt was at the last bar. And I think everybody appreciates you putting that in there, because I found that very helpful. And then here were some fund balance comparisons to other districts, and, you know, where we're at and where other districts are at. Again, our discussion was centered around maybe redefining the six percent that we had as more of a minimum rather than a target. And if we look down where some of these other districts are, that seems to be consistent with where others are at. Maybe actually slightly lower. So our recommendation would be to establish a six percent minimum, and then start having some discussions about where would this target end up that would allow you, if you start seeing some shortfalls come into play, where you don't have to impact programs yet, you can take a little bit of a slower approach rather than you hit the floor and suddenly you've got to make, you know, some really hard changes and turns, whether it's with staff or programs. So that would be one of our big recommendations. We are currently still in a deficit spending of about a million dollars a year. And the FAC really believes that the dollars really should be viewed as sort of one-time funds that wouldn't necessarily be used for ongoing reoccurring expense subsidy, that we find ways to keep that budget in relative balance.
Alright, a few notes on the economic outlook. The economic outlook from the state of Minnesota has improved since 2019, but there's still a forecast, a forecasted slowdown out into the future. I work in the financial services industry, so I hear a lot of these things. And I've heard a lot of good things about the economy, but I think we're coming up to that point of, oh, like, full employment, and it's hard to generate more economic growth out of that, is one personal note I would throw in there, maybe coming on that. The budget outlook has an automatic allocation to the reserve account. So it's bringing that to 2.3 billion at the state level. There is anticipated growth in revenue continued into the 2022-2023 budget run. Actually, there's an update coming Thursday, Patricia, is that right? Yeah, so there's another update to the state outlook this Thursday that'll be released, so we'll know more then. You can see unemployment there is below the US rate, in Minnesota is below the US rate, excuse me. And then this year is not a funding year in the legislature. So we don't anticipate a lot of changes coming on that front at this point in time. So just a summary of the different recommendations we've touched on. That calculation of actual kids in seats to the APU number, that fifty-one hundred's a good working number. Kind of working off the two percent increases to funding. Holding that special education revenue at the same level as we wrap up this year. Down to the fiscal recommendation, so holding student fees flat, as we mentioned before. Big one would just be, not that there need to be cuts, but to manage the expenses, especially around payroll and benefits. And then probably the biggest one is this minimum concept to the fund balance, and making sure that there's more of a grasp on what that means if you're down to six percent and how it's gonna work. And we have a picture of our group, and I think we have a video too, do you have that?
Under the fiscal recommendations, where it says, "Focus on managing expenses primarily salaries and benefits", can you explain, I know that you said that doesn't mean necessarily cutting, but what would that look like then?
Our discussion in the group was that, we look at the budget, we kind of see how it's operating, and don't feel like we need to sound alarm bells. But we know the biggest driver of the expenses are salaries and benefits. And so basically, in my opinion, those should always be managed very diligently, and just continue on that path. Until some point, we know more about either having more resources available or needing to make more dramatic cuts.
And I think the other color I'd add is, you know, if we're getting two percent increases, but we've got, you know, three and a half percent increases in the salaries, and it's eighty, eighty-five percent of the budget, you know, you can suddenly be running, you know, increasing your deficit year over year fairly quickly. And it's not dollars that go away, they build upon each other. So it isn't like you spend it this year one time and it's gone. It now embeds in your budget and is, you know, creating a consistent shortfall.
On the fund balance policy, I noticed that, I think it's YZETTA has a range. And I know that intermediate District 287, I sit on that board, and we also have a range of, I think, six to eight percent. Would you recommend a range as the policy, or more of a two different targets? You know what I'm asking?
I think the consensus was, we, the six percent be used as more, be redefined as more of a minimum. Once you hit that minimum, you have got to swing around and make cuts to get that back up above that level. And if it's a, if you've got more of a target, then again, the discussion, I mean, it's like, we were sort of throwing out numbers. Is it ten percent, is it twelve percent, is it, what, you know, what percent should that be? Where you can look at, okay, let's, we can take some dollars and expand some programs, or wait a minute, now we're down below that target, maybe we need to pull some things back. And, you know, so that you're able to do things slowly rather than abruptly. Whether, and again, the biggest lever to pull is employment, and that isn't necessarily something you want to do.
I was just gonna say, we discussed the idea of a target at twelve percent and a minimum at six. And I guess we landed on, it's kind of your job to figure out the target as we're making decisions, and the minimum was our idea.
You guys were thinking, so thank you.
Just want to say thanks again. It's exciting to see the committee with such community membership, and that, as you said, representation from each school. I'm really excited to see that we have so many people embracing this. And I got to sit in on one meeting, and it was really interesting to see people who are so passionate about this stuff. I thought maybe it would be dry, looking at numbers kind of thing, but it was people really articulate, better than I can, articulating what it means, what those numbers look like, how to understand that, what do people do in the business sense, and how things are different for us in education, which is pretty significant, I think. And one of the things, so that leads to one of my questions, or point of clarification for people who are following at home, that largely what we're talking about here right now is general fund dollars. And we have several other buckets of money that have limitations on what we do. So if people think, "Oh, we have referendum money, we can move around," and things like that, what we're talking about here is really general fund dollars when we're talking APUs.
Yep. And I think when you start thinking about the unassigned fund balance too, as you look down the road the next couple, three years, there are gonna be a lot of changes coming into play, right? You're bringing on new buildings, what are those expenses gonna look like? You've added a central kitchen, what are those, you know, are there gonna be a lot more costs there that are gonna be coming through? And so as you start working through some of those uncertainties over the next couple of years, and then seeing what reality is, to have, you know, a more robust fund balance certainly helps, you know, smooth that out while you then settle in at what your new reality is.
I'd just like to add my appreciation for the idea of the minimum and a target. You know, I've personally been thinking through this as we've been discussing fund balance stuff for the last couple of years. And we do sit at about sixteen percent right now. And what I like personally about the idea of a minimum, a floor, and then a target, is that gives us permission to spend what we have above the target. And I think that that's something that I've personally struggled with, you know, the idea that all of us even experience in our own finances about you just, you kind of want your bank account, you know, your savings account to be as big as possible. And if you just go with that mentality, that it should always be as big as possible, then you maybe forego a family vacation, or you, you know, don't do other things that you would otherwise do if you say, "This is what our minimum is gonna be in the excess," or "The target is gonna be in the excess above that we should be spending." And in this case, to the benefit of our students perhaps, and to the benefit of our community. So I think it's helping me kind of process a little bit, like, how we live with that fund balance and what that might mean. And so I personally appreciate the advice and the guidance and all of your discussions along those lines to help inform us as we evaluate it when it comes time to do so. So thank you, guys. Videos?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I think I remarked last year, I was really new at the time. And this is not, this is uncommon to have community members doing the presentation. And it made me really nervous last year. I was a little less, I was quite a bit less nervous this year. So we should, I'm really thankful for this group of people who also care about this work. That's really important and can be an exciting conversation to be a part of. And you do not have to be a financial wizard like these two to be a part of the conversation. And that's one, I wanted to just get a message out that part of building community trust is to get access to this information to as many as possible. And our work got so much better this year. We, you know, you guys named a couple of places, adding that forecast item, thinking about the ways we present budget variances, they're putting the information on the website. Just those things made us get more clear in the finance office and really make it, make the information more accessible to our community. So we really want to continue to expand the finance committee. I was hoping that we would have a more diverse finance committee racially. That didn't happen yet. But I do believe that the act of creating transparency and opening up the work, because most of our systems were built in whiteness, and in financial systems and budgeting systems, and by opening up that work, it's an act of anti-racism. That the opening up and the transparency is inviting the community to come in and evaluate our work and challenge it. And hopefully, we will begin to help the finance committee look more accessible, and we'll have, and a place where someone's opinions and thoughts might actually be heard, and that it's not a waste of time. And so I'm hoping that we'll get more applicants, we'll continue to seek more applicants. So we increased our membership, financial experience isn't necessary. And we do have a quick little video here, I want to show you one of our finance committee members. Jessica helped us create a little video. Katie actually came up with a couple of questions. Why did you join Finance Advisory Committee and what did you learn? So this is just after a meeting, after our last meeting, actually. A few of our finance committee members, some experienced ones, a student who's on the finance committee playing basketball right now downstairs, and some of our new committee members. So this is some of the thoughts they had. I don't know who I thought was gonna do that for me.
Hi, my name is Brian Kelly. I'm a parent at Aquila Elementary. I have a third grader, a fifth grader. I joined the committee for the first time this year as I'm interested in learning more about the finances and how the district operates and having more insight. You ready?
Yep.
I'm Katie Lawler. I am a parent of two pure, pure children. I've been on the committee for several years. I joined because I wanted to get involved in the community, making this a little park, and knowing that I was gonna have kids in the district for many, many years. And I wanted to have a better understanding of how the district operates and have some input into the education environment for my kids.
I'm Aaron Ellingson. I work in the finance department at the school store. And that's kind of how I got into this, through connections with Ms. Ross.
Hi, I'm Jessica Bussi, and I am the assistant principal at the high school. And I joined the finance committee because I was a math teacher before I became an assistant principal. And I really like numbers and knowing the why behind where money goes and what our money is spent on in the district. And I think it's really important that we're informed.
Richard Benson. I have two kids in the district. First is a graduate of PSI. The reason I joined is simply to gain a better understanding of the finances of the school district. And honestly, that's really what I got out of it. I have a lot more in-depth knowledge about the finances of the school district. In particular, the enrollment projections were really interesting to me, learning about those. So it's been a great experience, and I feel like hopefully I can provide more input in the future.
It was a very enlightening experience. There was a ton of complexity. I'm just getting a handle on how the finances work and what the different decision points are, has been a great learning experience in the forward years in the future with more knowledge and background to be of more help.
One of the things that I have learned this year is that our money is spent and really allocated in great ways, and that our fund balance has a lot of variety to it. I also really appreciated the clarity that Patricia gives us around finance and enrollment and the calculations that she does behind the scenes.
...for my kids. And I have gotten out of this experience a great deal. I have a much deeper understanding of how the district is funded, how the district operates, what our priorities are. And I do feel like I have a voice, and I appreciate that.
And one thing that I got out of it, I think just seeing the comparisons of how the simple school store calculations and all that compares to the district-wide enrollment per- school store calculations and all that compares to the district-wide enrollment projections and kind of budgets and how that money goes around. So, makes me appreciate kind of people who are working for the district and are dealing with a lot of big numbers like that.
Okay, thank you all very much and please pass along our thanks to the rest of the committee. Okay, next up, policy development, first reading, policy 404, employment background check. Flower, can you take us through any relevant information here?
Yes, so you'll notice that there is an MSBA red line update to the procedure section under point C. Our Director of Human Resources, Rick Ryer, also made some changes to, more in the procedure section, but the big change that you'll notice from what he did to the policy is that section for criminal history consent form has been taken out. Now everything is done electronically so that there's not a physical form that needs to be signed.
Okay, but I, we obviously still need...
Correct. It just needs, it's all done electronically, so there's not the actual form.
Anne, so in the 14 years since the last time this board looked at this policy, the state law and the MSBA model policy have changed, but before the, the most recent model policy. So, we have missed a couple, I think. And so Flower and I have already kind of looked at the current model policy, namely that the language of who the background track is required of includes both, those who are individuals who are offered employment in a school and then all individuals except enrolled student volunteers who are offered the opportunity to provide athletic coaching services or other extracurricular academic coaching services to a school. That's in state law and that is in the, in the MSBA model policy. And so there's a bunch of places where that just, that kind of needs, just needs to be added. So, I'm going to go through and find all those places and kind of do a little find and replace for Flower for our next meeting, if that's, if that's okay with the group.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much, Anne, for being on top of that. Anybody else? Anybody have any concerns regarding equity with anything that's stated in this policy as written? Or anything else we should be considering along those lines?
On that note, I mean, having read the law, it is largely statutory, very much so. It's, there's not a lot of wiggle room that we would have from that perspective.
That was actually my recollection as well. I mean, it makes sense, we are employing people to, most of whom will be working day in and day out with students who are considered a vulnerable population, so let's make sure that our students are kept safe. So, okay, so Anne, will help us out by making those additional, those changes to comply with the law? And if there's nothing else, right, we'll move on. Thanks again, Anne. Okay, policy development, second reading, policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies. We did discuss this policy a couple of weeks ago. And Flower, thank you very much for making those changes to reflect that some of our students live with guardians. And I don't think there were any other suggestions or comments last week about this policy, anything, or last meeting about this policy, any changes now? Tammy, anything from you?
No, there's not really anything beyond what was changed that is changeable on our part, really.
Right, because again, this is a great example of a policy that is governed by law in a lot of situations as well. Okay. All right. Hearing no other comments there, moving on. Consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ken, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Colin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All right. It passes seven zero. Action agenda, approval of the second reading, policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies. Is there a motion to approve the policy as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Laura and I'll give the second to Anne. All in favor?
All opposed.
Passes seven zero. Okay, the employment agreement of our new Children First Executive Director, who is Margaret Gano. Does anybody want to speak on that? Sarah Aston?
Chair Tim Beck, I can speak to that. So, we, the Children First Executive Committee recently hired Margaret Gano to serve as the next executive director. As you'll see, the contract is, it, it's very familiar and similar to the previous contract held by the former Executive Directive of Children First. The, the committee, it was an unanimous vote on behalf of the committee to hire Margaret. And as you, you know and recall from the past, that the school district serves as a pass-through for Children First, Children First is its own organization. And our partnership with Park Nicollet Foundation, the city of St. Louis Park and St. Louis Park Public Schools, we work to help support and provide guidance and oversight for this program that, that, that serves our community. So, as an executive committee member, I'm on behalf of the executive committee, we would recommend that the school board approve this contract for Margaret Gano.
Anne, I just want to follow up Superintendent Ossai to clarify that no school district funds are allocated to the salary of the Children First Executive Director.
That, that is correct, Chair Tim Beck. All of the funds for the executive director position for Children First are, are raised through different fundraising mechanisms. And one of the, it actually been coming up next week, the Children First Annual Breakfast serves as a, as a tremendous fundraiser to help support sustainability of this program.
Great, and I think that that is an area that some folks in the community have been confused by because the executive director's office is housed in the district office and she does have a slpschools.org email address, I believe. And so although we do sign her employment agreement, we do not actually pay that from our general fund or our other salaries. This is not one of the salaries that's included in the 85% salaries and benefits. And I would like to also just welcome Ms. Gano because she is actually only the second official executive director of Children First in all of its time in St. Louis Park. Ms. Wells, Deborah Wells graciously served as the interim for the last few months following Karen Atkinson's retirement. But yeah, so Margaret is only the second person coming into this job. And I know I speak for the rest of the board when I say we're very excited to see what she can do with this institution and how she can expand it to further benefit the students and the, all the children in St. Louis Park. So, I kind of maybe jumped the gun there, who knows what's going to happen in the next minute, but is there a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Moved by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Now everything I said before officially applies. Welcome, Margaret, and we all look forward to meeting you. All right. Last up, communications and transmittals. Who has stuff to talk about tonight?
I do.
All right.
I am the school board liaison to our senior program at Lenox and I was able to meet with Angie and Birdie about a week, week and a half ago. And just talking about how we can continue to strengthen the relationship between the senior program and the community and the schools. And just talking about exploring ways that we could maybe make some connections between the senior program members and the students in the school. So, I'll be continuing to meet with them and supporting their efforts and really looking forward to forming some positive relationships.
I attended the St. Louis Public School. I cannot get better, I've been sick like for a month, I'm sorry. I am the liaison to the St. Louis Park Public School Foundation Board. And the big thing that I wanted to share with you is that the mission of the board is to provide grants to the public schools above and beyond the curriculum or ways to enrich the curriculum. And teachers apply for the grants and they use the money to buy something or, just like I said, to increase the classroom or take it like a step beyond the curriculum. And so the grants have recipients for this year, there are about 19 of them have received their letter of support. And on April 15th, there will be an event called the Grant Share Event where the recipients will be presenting what they are using their funds for. And Sarah, you have to help me, is it going to be in the cafeteria or in here?
To be determined. Okay, we're working on location.
So we'll give you details, but it is April 15th and you are all invited, all school board members, to come see and there will probably be food served? Yes. There, there was some things that are being worked out, as you can tell, but, and I will give you more information as the, the date gets closer, but mark that on your calendar because it's very exciting to see what our teachers are doing. And I mean, I hear like, at some point drones might have been used for money for drones and really cool things, I think, going on. So, it's definitely worthwhile to attend. Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that it would be great for any of us to attend who can because our racial affinity groups were one of the recipients of a grant this past year. And so, that has been of a benefit to our staff of color and we would like to be able to continue to express our gratitude to the Public Schools Foundation for that support.
Wanted to, one of the things that I talked about a, a couple of weeks ago was the cable franchise renewal process here in the city of St. Louis Park. And it was amongst about five other updates, so I kind of rushed through it a little bit. But I want to take just a little bit more time because there, we are in the process of doing that. The city of St. Louis Park is working with Comcast and there's a lot of things that we could benefit from and things that we can ask for and request as we're looking to renew that franchise. And for those of you who are watching at home here, this is one of the reasons why you're able to watch us is because of that agreement with the city of St. Louis Park and Comcast. And there are things like the number of government channels that are allotted, the quality of the channels, the, the equipment, things and resources within the facilities, things within the community and some other opportunities. And so, if you have strong opinions about these things, even if you have moderate opinions about these things, there's an easy online survey to take. I took about 10 minutes or so to do it the other day. It's open through March 3rd. Encourage anybody to take that survey, fill out some information about how they watch cable TV here, when do they watch, do you watch the government channels, why, those kinds of things. And I just think it's a great opportunity to make sure that, it's one of the ways that we keep people informed. And even if you say, well, I watch it on the internet, I watch it on YouTube or whatever, again, that's another way that you're able to do that is through the use of that equipment and things. So, I think it's, I really appreciate it, as we talked earlier tonight about transparency and things like that, making sure that what we do here is available to people and what the city does and, and also showcasing our awesome students and faculty and all the amazing things that happen in our community. So, it's real easy to find on that website right now, if you go to the homepage, it's hard to miss. Otherwise, look under Park TV and you'll see that information right on there. Thank you.
Okay, for the last few meetings, well, all of the meetings so far, I haven't been able to provide any information, but now I have something. So, I, I hope I don't go too long because I had a really busy couple of weeks. So, we started with Aquila, we have the liaison for Aquila. So we went to their school, their PTO meeting. And the city had two people come to there, it was, one was a community outreach person of which he talked about some internships that the city is going to have, of which we, he's encouraging people to apply for those. And then also, there was a community kind of event person there. And there's a Shamrock Bowl coming up, I think it's March 14th, that sounds like fun, it's going to be at The Rock and it's going to be bowling with teams of four people or more. So, those are two great things. And then seeds came and they were talking about a grant that they've received for a mobile, mobile farm that they're going to be putting together and bringing, bringing into the community this summer. So I saw, thought that was really exciting and I'm going to participate on that one as far as developing that mobile farm and helping to do things. Because I always want to do that tiny house thing and tiny house thing is right in line with that. So, anyway. And then, so for many, many years, probably seven years, the civil rights experience came and talks and talks to us about the kids that gone on their tours. And every year I said, I wish I could be a chaperone. And every year I, well, three of the years I tried to get my kids to do it. So, I had the opportunity that one of my kids is actually going to do it, so.
They're a time's charm.
They're a time's charge, or charm. I'm not going to be able to be a chaperone, but I, I have been able to go and experience some of those Saturday classes that they have. And that is, it's phenomenal. It's just, it's just a beautiful experience. I always say every year, I wish that everybody could experience that. Everyone should and could experience that. And I know we can't experience the whole thing, not all of our kids can, but we could bring some of that learning to this building. So, that's something that we should probably talk about and see if we can get some of that education here. Also, so that's going to be exciting, they're going to be coming back after spring break and I imagine they're going to talk to us and I'll have more to say about it then. Have a wellness committee meeting this week on Wednesday of which, you know, some of the conversations were around wellness today on, that we can't, well, we weren't able to comment on. But I, I think that was spot on what they were talking about and I'm excited, really excited about where we're going in this district with the wellness and the food and the nutrition and everything. I've been not so excited about it a few years ago, but I think that we're really moving along. And I, I think it's going to be a great experience, it's going to be a great ride and it's going to take some finances that we don't expect, that we hope that we can mitigate. So, that's all I'm going to talk about. So, thank you. So then, so then I had an opportunity to go on to, MSB had a, a, they wanted to see what curriculum should look like for, other than just going to college. And, and went to a meeting, four hours on, at the North Hennepin Community College. And it was really, really good, it's a different process on trying to identify different pathways that people can take. But I was able to meet a couple of college guys there that we exchanged numbers and now we're on LinkedIn. And so it's a, a great communication that we had there. And then we had, Friday was Career and, Career and...
College Advisory Board.
College Advisory Board, thank you. That we had this last Friday, it was, it was a kind of like a speed dating, but you're interviewing kids. And, and getting them to understand what it takes to, to network and to apply for jobs and what kind of college paths you can take for different opportunities. So again, that was another great experience, to sit and talk with kids.
Kind of exemplifying here how much work can go into this job in a couple of weeks since we have, we all have had periods like those, we all will have more periods like those. So thank you so much, Ken, for really, for just killing it the last couple of weeks with your meeting attendance.
I'll be silent for the next one.
I want to talk about a couple of important upcoming events. We have a school board listening session this Saturday, February 29th, the extra day of the year 2020, at 10:00 a.m. in the main conference room here at St. Louis Park High School, which you enter into from door one. A listening session is a little bit different from the open forum that we had here tonight. At the open forum, you're... Um, at the open forum, you're speaking to the entire board and the board doesn't really talk, doesn't, doesn't have an opportunity to speak back, it's not really a conversation. A listening session um, is a conversation that you get to have with um, three or fewer board members and it looks like um, it'll be me, uh, myself, Colin and Heather um, on, on Saturday. So we will look forward to um, to meeting you and hearing from you then. Um, at our last meeting, Colin and I spoke about having been at a CAC event about um, the upcoming caucus and primary election, which are happening tomorrow and next Tuesday. So caucus tomorrow, caucuses, if you remember, are run by the political parties and that they're doing party business this year, party business not including the presidential nomination election. That is now going to happen in a primary election next Tuesday, March third, at your normal polling place. Um, if you have any questions about the primaries, about the caucuses, the, um, the website mnvotes.org, which is the office of the Minnesota Secretary of State, um, has a ton of information, there's little flyers, there's um, some really great information. Also, there, um, the city of St. Louis Park has um, put out a voting guide, which is amazing and you can probably even see it on the camera, it's hot pink, so it's hard to miss. And if you see one of these um, around, grab it. I actually, I missed it at my, I don't know how I did, um, at my, at the last election, but it has the map of all the wards and the polling places and um, information about voting in St. Louis Park. So the, um, some great information on both of these, um, in both of these places. I know that a lot of that information is also online at the um, St. Louis Park, city of St. Louis Park website. So go and get your voice heard, one of the next, both of the next two Tuesdays. Thanks.
All right, I think our communications and transmittals tonight may be longer than our actual meeting and that's totally fine, 'cause now it's my turn to talk. Uh, and I will just say that I actually attended um, this past Thursday night and I think Superintendent Ossai had the opportunity to attend as well, our high school's Spring Musical, which was Hairspray. And I will admit to being at times uncomfortable or um, having thoughts and feelings about some, I had never seen the movies before, um, about some of the racial, uh, and as Ms. Sanchez spoke to tonight, like fat shaming and things that were in this play, um, in this musical. And I, I, I continue to wonder whether I want our students to be engaged in something like this, but here's what I am really happy about. Um, for whatever uh, racial stereotypes or tropes were perpetuated by this play that was written in the eighties, it is set in the sixties, um, it has been my understanding that it has um, intentionally sparked and um, fostered communication among our students about what all of this has meant. And to be discussing what it means for them now in, to be students in twenty nineteen and to be performing this and having these discussions and there were um, students of color playing white students and vice versa, there were um, uh, students who identify as boys playing women and vice versa and so, you know, we, there, there is a lot of meat on the bones of that play. And so I'm continuing to think through it and sort through it about how I feel about it, to be honest, but the one thing that is very clear and that was undeniable, is that we have students who have tremendous amount of talent in this school and we, judging from the amount of the screeches and from the um, row behind me, we have a lot of enthusiastic support among students for their friends, uh, who are performing, from our musicians um, to our actors and singers. It was just, like I said, tremendous talent and excitement and enthusiasm from our students. So thank you very much to Mr. Miskowski and to Lil Zumberg and I think I'm missing some adults who, I'm sure I'm missing lots of adults who were involved in that production. Um, but I am grateful that our students have the opportunity to engage in those discussions and to um, share their talents with our community. So, anything else?
I have one more.
Yes, all right.
Being that my daughter is a Nordic skier, I want to celebrate our junior, Dani Walsh, who did on February fourteenth compete at the state um, individual um, race in Giants Ridge. He um, finished well and I think eighty-third um, in the state and he is just a tremendous leader on the team as well and so I just really wanna give a shout out to him.
All right, yes.
No, you are.
No, I'm kidding, of course I'm kidding.
So, so um, I, I, I probably downplayed the civil rights experience thing a little bit, but I took some numbers on what it is on, a- as far as the participation of adults that are in this, this program. Um, I, when I was there, it was at the University of Minnesota, it was a very, very large room. It was probably a hundred and thirty people there and of that, that was parents of all kinds of backgrounds and students and um, the participants that were there as far as teachers or people that are going on the trail, the field trips, there's two of them, by the way, one's going south and one's going east. My daughter's going east. Um, but um, there was two people from U of M, there was four teachers from Minneapolis, two from St. Louis Park, there was five from Wayzata and um, no, sorry, that's six, two from St. Anthony and then there was two artists that are going on each of the trips that are gonna document it and photograph and all things like that. And then there was two staffs from a um, from a, like an advertising agency. So um, it, it was really, 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 really cool. So anyway, and Dr. Stevens is also presenting and doing some of the education on the Saturday events, so um, cheers for St. Louis Park.
Oh, yes. Okay, Sarah, a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Colin's moving to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Let's go home. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.